Okay, could everyone take your seats, please? And we'll see if we can't get on the other bus before it leaves here. Be good.
Uh-oh. Lost one other group.
We'll get him back.
Oh, my God.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order, please. And we are to the consent agenda. Counsel, if you would take a couple of seconds, take a look. And we have a sizable one. It's from A from R to R. Is there anything you would like to remove from the consent agenda for consideration?
G.
G? Counsel, is there anything else?
Motion to approve the remainder.
Motion to approve the remainder, and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye. Okay, item G. Martha?
Thank you. As you see, we have very good news. We saved a lot of money on our animal, domestic animal services with Lee County, thanks to Lisa. And during this year, and as Councilwoman Martin knows, and Mayor, I know you know this, we have a lot of stray cats in town of the feline variety. And, yeah. And since we saved $79,000 on our contract, Carl, the head of Lee County Domestic Animal Services, I, Diane's in the loop as the staff liaison, John, have talked to Donna about having a vendor down here to do the trap neuter release program with Dr. Nemech on Old Forty-One. That's who they would prefer to have. That's who I'd prefer to have, too. So that we can finally get this nipped in the bud as much as we can. But folks are not using as much as they could the trap neuter release services and getting these stray cats neutered because they have to go pick up a trap, take it at eight o'clock in the morning up to Lee County, come back at 3:30, get the cat. It's very hard. So if we could have this service available...
So you're proposing that staff bring back the, a proposal of what that would cost at some point?
Well, we would limit it, cap it, we would have a cap for it, yes. I'm asking for an interlocal agreement. The county has drafted something. We need to put some finishing touches on that and then have Audrey bring that back at the next meeting.
That'd be fine. Counselors, is that okay?
I make a motion.
Have her bring it back at the next meeting for consideration?
Need a motion?
No, I don't think you need, just bring it back for consideration.
Very sweet. Thank you.
With the understanding that some of the funding for this would obviously come out of the savings we're realizing here, is what we're shooting for.
Well, yeah. And it depends on the interlocal agreement, how much it is and everything else, right?
Okay, well, then, let me just talk about it really quickly. That we're gonna buy traps, okay? They will get us a very reasonable, cheap price through the county. Traps can't transport cages, ten of those. And then each cat, males are thirty-five, females are fifty. They provide the rabies shots, the microchips, the tipping, the surgery, the whole thing, the record-keeping, the billing, blah, blah, blah. They send us a bill monthly per how many cats fee for service. It's passed through Lee County. So if we say we want to spend $25,000 this year, great, twenty-five next year. I'd just like to see it go for a couple of years. Our Director of Animal Services has a grant submitted or ready to be submitted in the next cycle in March for a trap neuter release program, including Benita Springs, so that it can be placed in the locality instead of everybody dragging the cat. That sounds horrible, dragging the cats up to Fort Myers.
Okay, but having staff prepare that and bring it back for our consideration next meeting, that's what you want?
Yes, sir. I just don't know what kind of cap counsel would consider, but I guess that can be an option the next time we come back.
I would look for staff to make a recommendation in that regard.
We suspect that that cap will become clearer as we talk with the county.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
You make a motion, we don't need to make a motion. You're just gonna do that.
Well, I make a motion to pass G.
Well, you make a motion for the staff to prepare a, not approval of the interlocal agreement, that you want them to draft...
Direct staff to prepare, to work with Lee County to draft, to come up with an interlocal agreement.
Bring it back to us at next meeting.
And bring it back to us next meeting. Plus, we have to approve G.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there was a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Public comment. Any member of the public wishes to speak this time, please come forward.
I'd like to read a, an email that I received from Assistant City Manager John Gucciardo to make a point. Says, "Alberto, when you called me," I believe it was last Thursday, "we spoke for some time about what you perceived as a misapplication of code enforcement powers relative to your neighbor. Your issue, in short, was that a prior owner had done repairs, additions, et cetera, that were not permitted or done properly, and that code enforcement ignored your calls and complaints. You went to explain that the property has now changed hands and that you believe that an innocent new purchaser is now the target, your word, of code enforcement. You implied that there was no enforcement prior due to the identity of the previous owner as a friend of the city officials. I promised you I would look into the matter and report back to you. I investigated the matter on Tuesday and was surprised at the meeting Wednesday morning when you indicated that you had talked to me, but I had not been responsive. So here's my response. Our records show only one minor violation of the property in question, when it was owned by the individual that you felt had some preferred status. That violation was brought to the owner's attention and compliance was achieved. There are no open or active files relative to the property. Now that would affect the new owners. I believe your concerns are unfounded. I consider this matter concluded." In reaction to a denial by such Assistant City Manager John Gucciardo of my request for a meeting with city management relative to some issues with code enforcement sensibly, coherently, and productively, I called the city manager's assistant, Ms. Swanson, to report on Gucciardo and request an official denial from the top dogs showing. Miraculously enough, the manager himself answered the phone, and I read him the short and nasty email narrative. I capitalized on the opportunity to implore him for a meeting, arguing that given the dilemma of the city treasury, our city should be proactive in encouraging rather than stonewalling functional, productive partnerships with private initiatives, to which he responded emphatically, "We don't have a troubled treasury." Mr. City Manager, I observed, just on the ecological corrective maintenance that the superlatively irresponsible management of our commercial and residential development has entailed, we're profoundly in the red for at least a generation. I was so happy to see today the manager make a presentation where he indeed accurately articulated that funding is indeed an issue and is indeed making reference to how important the private sector's input is. I have issues with regards to my, the code enforcement matter because there's a $25,000 payment that I made without merit. My wife has recently found the file where Home Depot pulled the permit, and apparently they had alleged that there was no final inspection done, which is the reason why I was wrongfully cited by this person that's been targeting me, not anybody else, Mr. Victor Tirado, who I believe merits termination, frankly. That compelling documentation, I believe, is sufficient for me to procure the reimbursement of the $25,000 because they charged me $250 a day while I was incarcerated wrongfully."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baier. You know that the public comment at the end of the meeting, you could continue the rest of your speech.
Later.
Yeah, thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak this time, please come forward.
Ron Puer, Beneden, Taxpayer Action Group. Last time I was here, a week or so, or two ago, I brought, I guess, kind of to your attention, at least some of you, the matter of Spring Creek. And I got a communication since then, Spring Creek down in the Pelican Landing area. And I don't want to slight anybody in Pelican Landing, I mean up in the Pelican Landing area. In addition, this is what a response from a commissioner said in a reopening of the request that was initially made about five years ago to get some work done in the creek as well as the mouth of the creek where it meets the bay, Astero Bay. And in it, he said, is basically denying the request to do some dredging in Spring Creek that's desperately needed because there are many shallows there and bottlenecks and choke points that make it real difficult for boats that include, I excluded the last time I spoke, the pontoon boats. But pontoon boats have been, have run aground at the mouth of the bay and the creek. So we're all in need of some help out there, particularly during the tourism season, which has started. And the beginning of that comes lower tides than in the summertime when there aren't as many people out in their boat and wishing to do that kind of activity. So this goes on to say, in addition, since the dredging would primarily benefit the property owners and not the general public, the county would only be able to assist and coordinate in forming a municipal services taxing unit. Thanks, but no thanks to Lee County and the commissioners. We don't need that. We're already paying money to the Astero Bay Management Group of pretty, excuse me, forgive me, we're not paying them money. Well, in a roundabout way, we could end up paying the money. We are now paying the West Coast Inland Navigation District money annually on the tax bill. It's a separate breakout item. We've been doing so for years, and we've never gotten a taste of any of that money in return for all the years that we've paid for the existence of the WCIND, West Coast Inland Navigation District. So I'm here to ask you folks to take the bull by the horns on behalf of all Benita Springs folk, not only those in Benita Bay and Pelican Landing, but this is an area that is absolutely open to the general public. I mean, I can think of a great sign at the, at the beginning as you turn east off of the bay, and that would be get lost. It's backwater, it's a, mentioned it before, pristine place, and we should welcome the public at large, and it is not only serving those that live on the shoreline. Appreciate your time. Thanks a lot.
Ron, thank you for bringing it up to our attention. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, may I just speak in general about the West Coast Inland Navigation District?
You can talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Well, because I'm on the Waterways Advisory Committee, and of course, we prioritize the WCIND money every year, and our area gets a lot of money from WCIND. Number one is our police presence on the water. After years and years and years of working on it, Justin McBride was able to get a blanket maintenance dredging permit now so that every time intrepid waters or the channels get impeded for the boaters to use, they don't have to go for another permit. That money comes from WCIND. So I just want you all to be aware that we do get a lot of benefit from the WCIND money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. All right, seeing none. Audrey, it's, you're up here. City Attorney's Report.
Great. Okay, I have a couple items. We'll start with the first one related to motor vehicle towing. This comes from a request by Lee County and the Sheriff's Office to adopt two ordinances, well, one ordinance that they want adopted, and that ordinance is the bigger of the two. And that ordinance would be so that we mainstream our rules and regulations the same as Lee County as it relates to towing. This is where the Sheriff's Office calls when the car is being involuntarily towed. There are some boot stuff in that language, too. Also, for impounding and how exactly wreckers are to operate the, the operation of wrecker operators and immobilization and having the fees and conditions. The second ordinance is one requested by Chris Campbell. It's one that is an amendment to our existing, and because we're amending one, or we were writing one, he thought it was time that we might want to update the other one on that one. It's more of cleaning up the language in it, of having it so that there, I call it minor changes. It's making it more clear that all the vessels that we're talking about, when we use the towing ordinance for this, we say vehicle, but it's vessel, it's for vessels, it's for vehicles, vessels on land, because when you have a derelict vessel, that's a whole different standard and a whole different statute. Some other changes to make it very clear, it does not go to the zoning board, which is how it's currently written. We did have one towing, and that was where we had an appeal scheduled to city council under the new administrative appeals process. So it's just making that area more current.
Counsel, would you like to give permission to advertise?
I would.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, item B.
Okay, and item B is paid time off policy, counsel. This is just record-keeping. You've already approved this. It is just having the bare bones policy so that October 1, when it went into effect, it now has it actually adopted.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Item C.
I'm now going into three land development codes. The first one is one asked by the building official, and it would exempt certain work from needing a permit. The work is outlined in the green sheet along with in the ordinance. It's a very, it's a three-page ordinance, a very small ordinance.
Motion approved.
Yeah, a motion and a second, and for permission to advertise. Any discussion? Roll call. Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Well, I'd really like to see hot water heaters on here.
Yeah.
You know what? It's ridiculous. I don't want to use, it's a superlative, but it costs you about 250 bucks for a hot water heater, and we're charging, you know, like 75 bucks or 100 bucks to get a permit.
Could we, could we just add that as a possibility and then have...
Thank you.
Code enforcement come to the meeting so that he can talk to us.
The building guy?
You all right?
Right, the building official.
And just a gentle reminder for those lighting installations permits, I've seen some new lights go around town, and they're not shielded. So again, I ask, because I've had to ask this before, would you please follow the dark skies, ask the guys who are doing electrical to make sure that they're dark skies compliant, please? Thank you.
Okay, so is there permission to advertise? And you got a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Okay.
Next one is dock and shoreline ordinance. This was some changes, mostly to make them similar or current to Lee County standards. There are some changes. Mike Kirby's here if you have questions as to the ordinance, along with Nadine Hildebrandt, who worked also on this ordinance.
Okay, counsel, you want to make permission to advertise?
Motion, second.
We have a motion to second for permission to advertise. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, item E.
Another permission to advertise. This is Chapter Two. I just received some comments from Lisa Pace. I'll be making those changes to it, and just deals with the administrative fee for impact fees. Other changes are outlined in the green sheet.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, have anything else?
Just a little point. Sierra settled yesterday, contention on the bank agreeing to it, so hopefully I'll be bringing that back to you guys soon. So Shangri-La Road is moving its way. And then if anybody had any other questions on any other litigation, I'm available when needed.
Thank you very much. Carl, what do you got for us today? We are up to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel members, something really good happened at the commission meeting yesterday morning.
Hello.
Um...
Besides the top of my head coming off?
Well, yeah, that was interesting.
Good cop, bad cop. That was a strategy.
Yeah. I just, I just want to tell you that we're very excited that after almost a year now, which I remember Counsel Member Simons going, "How long is this going to take us to create a CRA? A year?" And I'm like, "Oh, no, no, months, months." I was wrong, and she was right.
Oh, wow.
What is great about this, what is great about this is that we're not creating a CRA. We're not having to go through all the bureaucracy. We're not having to make findings of necessity against our residents and their properties. This is really a financial deal between the county and the city, and the county's going to participate with 85% of their growth, their increment, above a base time period starting January, that base is January 2013. And so we are already working on that increase, which is good. And they're going to do that for 25 years, or 50% of the total project costs, whichever comes first. We're very excited by this. It's unique. We're not sure anybody else is doing this. It could be a model for future opportunities for the city, the county, to partner not only with us, but with other cities as well. I have to tell you, we could not have done this. This is another one of those teamwork things where we could not have done it without the support, first off, of all of our elected officials, because I know that at one time or another, all of you have been sitting in the council, in the commission chambers, listening to them talk about this issue. So your support has been great. Yesterday, in particular, the mayor, Martha Janet, Stephen Sackta, were there supporting the effort, and they knew, the commissioners knew that you were in the room. We have to thank the chamber, the EDC, for their support, and just our great staff. And again, big team effort from community development folks, John Dahmer, Jackie Jensen, Jay Sweet, and of course, our internal folks, you know, Arlene, John Gucciardo, and Lisa Pace, and others I've probably missed. But just, I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish here. It is a big deal. And, oh, and I missed Audrey. Gosh, Audrey, I'm sorry. And Audrey, because Audrey's still working, working on putting the interlocal agreement together. So we're excited. We think it's a great opportunity for our downtown, and I believe that there are some folks in the downtown area that are ready to pop if they can just see something happen, and this is going to help us get us there. So thank you for all of your support. Thank you, staff. Great job. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
And if, and if I may, Mayor, I just want to say thank you for that excellent speech you gave. I think that was the, that's what ignited the intercommission.
Almost ignited.
Do it now.
Ignited something. We've heard that speech.
I was the one that was, yeah. You got a little taste of it.
Oh, my gosh.
But anyway, thank you, thank you. It was my pleasure. Anyway, okay, Mayor and Counsel Member Items, discussion regarding a proposal to name the River Trail as Cullums Trail. Councilwoman Simons?
Well, Cullum Hasty spent almost 15 years collecting easements, badgering people, taking us in the woods, showing us the trees, showing us every little aspect. He won't be quiet about this, no matter how much we try. And I just think because, you know, he's lobbied state officials, he got, you know, help was instrumental in getting the ore bridge out, ore road bridge out, South Florida management helping to get that property to us, so many things, and, you know, assisting groups. So anyhow, I'd like to make a motion that we name in honor of Cullum Hasty the Benita River Trail as Cullums Trail.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Discussion, discussion, please.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
There's nobody that has more appreciation for Cullum's work than I do, truly. But I think we're trying to brand this city, and if we call it the Benita Trail, I think it gives us a step up. What I would suggest as, as to your motion is that we create portions of the trail that are in, thanks to people who have also done environmental work around this city. So you would have Cullum's Way for 100 yards, and you might have Martha Simon's Way for another, well, I'm just saying, you know, I'm trying to get you to vote here, you know.
I care about stuff like that.
I think that's a great idea, because I agree, I had the same concern about that. I think it needs to be the Benita Trail, but I think that him picking out his favorite section and us naming that section after him and putting a sign up there would be great.
And I think we can continue to do that with other people. I mean, as the trail grows, we continue to add other people.
Well, maybe another segment of the trail beyond the two miles that he's worked 15 years on would be fine, but I'm sticking to my guns on this Cullums Trail thing. Branding, you know, what Ben has been working on at Crew, you know, other people have envisioned about this trail and how it hooks up to Crew, and eventually, hopefully, hooks up to the Florida Trail. The Florida Trail has certain segments that are, like you said, named after other people. It's a much bigger thing, you're right. But overall, I mean, we have like Benita River Park. I think people know it's in Benita. It's on the Imperial River. That only is in Benita. So, you know, I had that concern at first, but he talked me out of it. He was really good.
Cullum talked you out of it.
Cullum, yes, Cullum talked me out of it.
Cullum is the one who wants this named after him?
No. You know, I am enchain to him at first.
No?
Well, he does, yes.
Okay, then it's yes.
But you know what? I talked to them about this a long time ago because I wanted to name Hidden Cypress Preserve. I recommended that that be called Cullums Preserve because he fought for that. And so he's like, "Ah, no." And they hit it, Hidden Cypress Preserve, okay?
Okay.
And then he's so intimately, you know, connected to this that really Cullums Trail is appropriate. He's 70.
Mayor, Audrey, do we have a policy on this, naming nothing at all? I'm just wondering if we set a precedent over, you know, naming this for that person and then we had made this for that person?
Fifteen years.
Counsel had the discussion with the prior city manager who had strong opinions on it, and it's up to counsel, if you wish to have a policy, you can have a policy, or you could decide when you think it's appropriate.
That's always the problem when you go to name something after somebody who's living,
because you end up with this conversation, and, you know, you don't want to be, you know, saying, "You know, I don't want to name it after Cullum. I have all the respect in the world with Cullum. It's not about him, though." I mean, it's, it's about naming something after someone who's alive and right here, right now, and about the branding effort. I mean, it's not that he doesn't deserve to have something done. And so, but it puts us in a position of having to do that.
The other thing, just to point out, the state of Florida has a naming policy where you can only name after living people, and to name after dead people takes a bigger act, so.
So, are you suggesting that, never mind. All right, so you have motion and a second.
Janet, Janet, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm so appreciative to all the work that he put into the trail, but I think for 14 years, we've also talked about it as being the Benita Trail. And so there is that, that name. So I know Cullum wanted it to be short and sweet, but I think what I'm trying to do is do a compromise here. And we've already got the signs that say Benita Trail out there, but can we add like a little thing in script that says Cullums, or in the corner of the sign?
Oh, Benita Cullums, Benita Trail.
Cullums Court.
I'll change my motion.
To what?
Cullums Benita Trail. And you got everything you want, all wrapped up in one.
Yeah, see, I did a little thing, like where we added just like the little namie on the side there.
So your motion is to...
May be happy.
So your motion is to, to make it Cullum's Benita Trail?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
A second. Oh, no, I made the motion.
I'm afraid.
Yeah?
Your motion?
Right there, I made my motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to name the Benita Trail, Cullum's Benita Trail. And there's a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, one more. I, I can't do it. You know, I like, I like Cullum. I think he's really done a great job. I think it's, I think it's inappropriate. I would love to have signs there that talk about his work. You can put a plaque up if you want to. But I think in terms of the city itself, it ought to be the Benita Trail. It's been Benita Trail too long to change it at this point. Cullum, sorry, babe.
Been about three years.
Yep, and I agree as well. I don't, I don't think...
I have a tough time with that.
I should be in a position of, I'll withhold comment on the promoting part of it, but I don't believe it should be that way, but, and I love Cullum. But anyway, any other further discussion?
Is there a possibility of a historical marker, like, you know, just saying something about this is the Benita Trail, talk about it, and then say Cullum Hastings was instrumental in helping out, something like that, or not?
Sounds like that's not in the picture for her.
Okay.
That's what she wants.
We'll just have this vote, and then we have another one real quick.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackta.
No.
Mayor Nelson.
No.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
No.
Right, motion carries.
Thank you. Cullum's Benita Trail.
Okay, uh, do you have anything else?
Just real quick.
Remembering that it's 10 o'clock?
Yeah, I know. I just want to congratulate Mayor Randy Henderson, who just blew him out of the water with 83% of the vote up in Fort Myers. Awesome. But what a gentleman, and I know everybody here enjoys working with him. Teresa Watkins Brown, congratulations to her. The first lady mayor of Cape Coral was elected yesterday. That's awesome. And I know, and Jim Birch is back, and we like him. Anyhow, I do. I can't speak for the rest of us, but I just want to send my congratulations to them and the other folks. I'm sorry, I don't remember your names, but I will send you a card. We went to the Senate Gaming Committee last week, and I think we made a pretty good showing. We got in the paper, but, you know, one of the issues, I think, and I got a personal thank you from Senator Richter for coming up, you know, I think it was helpful for them to say, "Well, look, they've approved this, gaming, and this is what we said. We've approved it here in Benita Springs. We voted for it. You don't like it where you live, don't vote for it. We voted for it." So I think that was a successful trip. Roger Brunswick went with us, and Brian Spina went with us from the Southwest Florida Performing Arts Center. And, and it was what, and Carl, and Kathy Reardon went with us. She did not speak, but she was introduced. Okay, the RPC, oh, we're doing all sorts of things over there, but they have an annual report that they have on video, and they do mention the fact that they help Benita Springs with the homeless shelter ordinance. They're proud of that. And I'd like to be able to bring that back. It's a quick, you know, you just, so you know what the RPC does. I, I think you'd all be surprised about how much money they're saving these days and the kind of services they're providing for people. And for us as a locality, what we pay, why we pay $13,000 to them. But I'd also like to bring back at the same time, you're gonna love this, Cape Coral enjoys a free seat on the RPC, meaning they don't pay the RPC, because they squawked so much about it. I'm so glad I congratulated you in Cape Coral. But Sanibel had that for years, and I think that should rotate, so that, you know, Cape, just like the TDC, Cape Coral gets it for a little while free, Benita will get it for free, and that it's fair and equitable that way. So I'd like to make a proposal to the county that they, they rotate that seat for us on the RPC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, I want to go, Bill, what do you got for us?
I just have something to say, and I'd like to get some clarification from the council. When Mr. Livingston was requested to come, I, I thought it would be presented under presentations. Am I off-base with that, in terms of announcing who's gonna do the presentations? I'm trying to understand that.
It wasn't on the agenda.
I know it wasn't, but it was a request.
Well, Bill, it's because there was an agenda item, and the agenda item was the, the city council's DRGR study. So that was the heading. It was staff's presentation of our DRGR study for decision. And so underneath that, he was given 15 minutes to comment.
My, my situation in five years, I, when anyone comes up to do a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, they're always listed on the agenda, and that's my question. I have never seen the presentations before that this has ever happened, and that's why I brought it to your attention.
Well...
I happen to think it's rude. I happen to think it's, it's appropriate. If he did, if, different story if, if it was something for three minutes, but that wasn't. It was a 15-minute presentation. It was a PowerPoint presentation. It should be listed, every person to have the opportunity, regardless of the persuasion of the, the person who was making the presentation. And I happen to think that it was a, what, I don't think it should continue. I think everyone should have the same opportunity and be, be there, regardless of what's on the agenda. That's just my point of view, and I, I'm shocked, I was shocked that it wasn't on the agenda.
Well, I was shocked that they were asking for 15 minutes on something that shouldn't have taken that long, but he was given 15 minutes of more of comment. He was given 15 minutes to comment, and we can argue about it all night long.
I can argue with you. I'm gonna state, that gentleman made a presentation. I don't, it doesn't have to be Mr. Livingston, it could be anybody. The presentations are there for a reason, so that people that want to speak more than three minutes have an opportunity to speak. And you did not, or whoever, didn't put him on the agenda, and I happen to think it's wrong.
Okay. Do lead note...
And are we gonna, are we...
Do you have anything else for us?
No, no, wait a minute. Let's see, the next time we have a present, somebody comes up from, let's see if they're listed on the agenda. If they aren't, then I'll, you know, come back and say, "How come?" But they should be, it's fair, it's the way it's supposed to work, and I didn't think it was appropriate, and that's why I'm talking about it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, I'm done.
You usually have a policy on that, I think.
Uh, Stephen, do you have anything for us?
Mark your calendars, January 16th, 17th, council members. January 16th is the middle school government day. It's much simpler than the next day. Friday the 17th is the high school government day. We'll have them from approximately 9:30 to noon on the 30th, Thursday, and from probably 8 o'clock till 1 o'clock on Friday. Same format as we've had in the past, mark your calendars. It's not a requirement that you be here, but it's helpful to the kids to see real elected officials in action. Thank you.
Hopefully we'll find some.
I hope it's not a, I hope not a five-hour action, but, you know.
Yep, anything else?
That's it, babe.
Uh, Councilwoman Martin.
No, I'm gonna defer because of the time.
Okay, Councilman Slackta.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John, if I may, do you by any chance have an update on the library status?
Yes, Sheldon K. and I communicate pretty regularly. He's indicated that they actually have a contract with a consulting firm. It's Providence Associates. The timetable is still being worked out in detail, more detail, but they hope, he's in the process of getting the consultant now all the backup material, the information that's been gathered up to this point. That'll happen this month. They hope to have their first sit downs and possibly onsite visits in December, and kick off the actual content of the work after the first of the year. So it's moving along very rapidly. As soon as I get more detail on their timetable, and especially the onsite visits, we'll let council and the former members of the Library Task Force know.
Thank you, John. The other thing is, we have the traveling wall, that's going, Vietnam Wall, that's going to be here for Veterans Day, and it's gonna be arriving tomorrow afternoon, approximately 4:30, coming from the Golf Course Center. And on the eighth, Friday morning, at 8 o'clock, we're gonna be erecting the, the wall. So if there's any able-bodied hands that are willing to help, it would be much appreciated. And then this opening ceremonies will start at 1:00. And that's it, and hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much.
1:00 Friday?
On Friday at 8 o'clock.
Pete, what you got for us?
I want to thank Carl, and I want to thank Martha, obviously, up at the Florida League of Cities. We came up short. There was a procedural vote there, where, yeah, you know, kind of a package deal, and we went down 17-11, on the short end of that vote, to make gaming a legislative priority for the Florida League of Cities. But all is not lost. There certainly are other folks involved with that. I do want to thank Bob Gillette and Steve Slackta for all their work, and others for Veterans Day on November 11th. At 11 o'clock, Congressman Trey Rado will be here, and encourage everybody that's able to come down. Want to congratulate Commissioner Brian Hammond, who was appointed by Governor Scott to fill the vacancy here on the Lee County Commission. Look forward to working with him. We have a lot of mutual friends, so I do know Brian. And I want to congratulate all the candidates that won and lost last night. It's a lot of hard work, we all know that, and congratulate them for their part in the democratic process. And congratulations to the Boston Red Sox, of course, and...
Go Yankees.
Unfortunately, my son's team came up a little bit short, but they did make it to the second round. They, they were in the Southwest Florida Championship Game for the Astero Mustangs, Pop Warner, but they lost to Clueston 18-8, so as much as it pains me, good luck, Clueston. Hope you can beat Southeast Florida in the next round.
Thank you, Pete. Martha, you had something, you had something else?
No.
No, Martha, you had something else.
Well, how did you know that? Is this just traditional?
Because I heard you.
Oh, okay. About the library, since you brought that library up. Sheldon K. at our meeting said that we would be first. Could we get that in writing, please? I like it in writing, that we're the first, I just want it in writing.
He said he would advocate for that.
I understand that. Can, I heard what he said, but you know what? We've been down this little road before. I would like, if, for like a Christmas present, I could have it in writing. I know, she's gotta go home.
John, why don't, why don't you, why don't we have staff and have John work on seeing how they are going to figure out, what's their plan so far as how they're going to prioritize, and then we can advocate for that prioritization to go that way? Would that be the proper way to do it?
I think that's appropriate.
Very nice, thank you very much. That's it. Mayor, I also want to announce that the Lions Club has started an after-school program at Benita Springs Middle School. It's free for the kids there, and Juan Romero, Lion Juan Romero, is heading it up. Thank you.
Okay, I have one item here. We have been, and staff and I have been working on, and on this Pelican Landing annexation issue here, and staff has been doing a great job, and they've been a lot of help. But it's very time-consuming, it's very tiring, it's exhausting. But I think that we owe it to the people in there to give them a choice that they've been waiting for, for a long time. But also intertwined with that is this incorporation effort that Astero is doing, because purportedly because we're doing this annexation effort. I would make this suggestion, I'm looking for some, some guidance from, from city council here. I think we need to, we need to adjust what our position is so far as in regards to two-mile buffer. Have I got everybody's attention?
Yes.
You sure did.
All right. And because of what's been going on, and because of the incredible pressure that our legislative delegation is getting from the village of Astero, and because of the way things are panning out so far as some, some good potential voluntary annexations, I would ask you to, to allow me to convey to them, and that our position be that, that we have no objection to the two-mile buffer, as long as they will honor any voluntary annexations that the city of Benita Springs enters into, up until such time as the village of Astero comes into existence. Just pure and simple.
And that's a motion, correct?
That's a motion.
And I'll second that motion, and we, can we just have discussion then?
Good, and we have a motion and a second on it, and discussion. Go ahead, Stephen.
Please, this has been a very contentious item. I've said several times, this is a bump in the road between Astero and Benita Springs. It is. We'll get past it, but it's very, very emotional. If we can take some of the emotion out, take some of the pressure off our state legislators, then I would support it. More than that, I would also support the incorporation of the city of Astero, because it would be easier to work with elected officials who serve under the same requirements and expectations as we do, to be able to deal with, you know, on a more even playing field and with more confidence in what happens. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And as part of that also, there are several communities to the northern border of us that are gonna request to be, be taken out of the Astero incorporation effort. I would also like to have a little latitude in, in allowing to, to advocate for them when I, when I talk to the legislators, to, to tell them, "Look, you know, you, you need to try to find a way to, if you're really in favor of self-determination, well, then you, you need to do that." You know, for these individual communities, if they don't want to be a part of it, they shouldn't have to be a part of it. And so I, if you would also give me the ability to, to convey that message to them too, that would be nice.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so a motion and a second for that. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. You want further...
Just real quick, so what you're saying here, the difference between one and two choices, you're recommending choice two here?
I don't have...
Up until the date of the vote, or what?
In front of me, up until, up until the date of the vote.
So November 4th, 2014 is when the vote is...
Not up until the date of the actual incorporation?
Which is December, if, if they vote for it, it would be December 31st, 2014.
Right.
Yeah.
Because people might change their minds.
I, I have a feeling that this, this will morph, and it's gonna be one of, one of three things. It may well be that we can only hope to get till the time that the legislator, legislation actually votes on the legislation itself. That may actually be the date that they draw the line out. In other words, whatever they write in their legislation, which is gonna be in, what, November?
I thought December, local legislative delegation?
Well, Mayor.
It's like the first week of December.
I, I would say I'd give you the latitude to go...
But that's not when they actually do the vote, it's in April. They actually vote on the legislation.
The legislation is during session, March and April, I believe.
Yeah, so it'll be till March and April. So I have a feeling that, that, that that'll be the date. We'll ask for the referendum, or the actual referendum is the date, but the fallback position will be that April, that April date, when they actually draw up the legislation and, and they have the verbiage that they need to have. That, that may be a more realistic one, so I would put that as a fallback position.
Mayor, I, I really would like to support this very much, because it's showing us, showing them that we're good neighbors. So let's move forward with this.
All right, we have motion and a second, and any other discussion?
Yeah, historically, it just hurts me, because I know it's Benita. What can I say, but we're not gonna win that fight.
Well, this, this, this actually puts this, I mean, this puts the impetus back on the people. If the people in those areas, if they want to be a part of Benita Springs, it's an easy thing to do. Just contact us. We're not gonna go seeking it out, but this way they'll know. It's up to them.
Thank you.
And just point of clarification, this isn't just, this might mean also resolutions, so we're authorized to prepare and have the resolution signed without it coming back to city council at this time?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, if that, if that would be all right, we should, if council, if you would authorize the, a resolution crafted towards this cause, if we need to do that, that would be good as part of that motion too.
So this means that you're not gonna get any more letters from Larry Newell?
No, that'll never... I'll be getting letters from Larry, 30 years from, 30 years after he's gone.
Probably, you'll still be reading the ones from today.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
And that's all I got, folks. I'm, I'm done. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additions, corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Councilwoman Simons?
Sorry. Please, we're, the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Okay, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
I just, I want to go home.
Alberto Bayer. Benita Springs is an ill patient, I mean, was an ill patient prior to its independence from county government, and it remains an incrementally, indeed progressively ill patient in need for rehabilitation. Its rehab, however, will not gain traction until its, its fundamental condition is spearheaded adequately. And it requires surgical precision, by the way. But I believe that the key here is the culturally, the idiosyncrasy that has us crippled. For example, Councilman Longheart was very.
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to, our protocol is.
Was very, excuse me, Mayor, give me more time.
I, I'm going to have to correct you.
Because you're going to correct me for something that you don't need to correct.
Don't interrupt me. Let me just explain the protocol.
I'm not going to talk to him. I'm talking to you about him.
I'll keep talking to you all night long, but your time will be up.
So, you're making a mistake.
I want.
As it's a matter of record.
Know that you are to address council in its entirety, not the individual council person.
And I just said, sir, for example, Mr. Longheart.
No.
Moved to do something very proper. And I'm not addressing him. I'm addressing the whole council about him.
I'm going to have to ask you to have a seat, if you don't.
So, once again, you just made a mistake, and I'm going to move forward. Now, on the other hand, Major, Mayor Nelson goes to say that he doesn't see any conflict, the conflictive input from those that presented today, which, by the way, one, way, one of them, Mr. Livingston, who was amazingly productive, and his input was invaluable, should have been put in the agenda. I've been asked to speak like him for more than three minutes. I haven't been able to get endorsement from you, nor from my district council or anyone else, manager included, because the protocol is written in a way that if one wants to do it the right way, you cannot accomplish the goal. But yet, this gentleman was given the opportunity at the expense of other people like myself, who have been given the same kind of accommodation, and that is dead wrong, as was your interruption, Mayor. Now, the cultural idiosyncrasy matter, which is what I'm trying to address here, is, for example, I get burglarized. I know who burglarized me. It was the young man next door. He burglarized twelve other homes in my neighborhood. I've known him since he was five, when my own boy was five, when we moved into the neighborhood. I taught him how to play soccer in my beautiful backyard. So, since the police did not move effectively to move forward to arrest him, and hold him accountable, and do the right thing, I started a neighborhood watch. As a result of starting the neighborhood watch, now Major Kathy Reardon, formerly captain of our city, moves to falsely arrest me, as is documented compellingly. I end up wrongfully incarcerated, which is also documented to the hilt, all because I was trying to do something as a proactive citizen. Same holds true with this issue with the, Mr. Duado. The man took advantage of when I was incarcerated to wrongfully cite me for an unpermitted offense. I ended up having to cough up twenty-five thousand dollars. Yet, in the house immediately next door, when I complained about the non-conforming, non-GFI-protected electric panel, because I was a Realtor, I was going to have an investor buy the property next door, and my code of ethics called for due diligence. I present the list of code violating issues, and they don't violate this person that had violated. Now, the new owner has ended up having to change the electric panel. It was not connected to the Zertik tap, to the sewer system.
Right.
All the things that I had identified, and yet, they were not.
Mr. Bayer, thank you very much for your comments, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the next meeting.
I sure will be.
Meeting adjourned.
Somebody's clapping at this lady.